Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the planning board meeting of May 27th. Called to order and rolled call, so we start with that. Show you, show them how it's done. Chris Solney.
Here.
Gordon Brewster.
Yeah.
Peter Morton.
Here.
Sandy Bodman Turner.
Here.
And Brian Fry.
Here.
Great, welcome to Brian and Sandy. And congratulations to Brian, Sandy, and Gordon for their election success. So here we are. Really excited to have you on. And I did submit a letter to the Cricket today, as is our practice, to thank Laura and Mary for their service for to the planning board. So the first thing we're going to do very quickly, I hope quickly, is to elect officers. We do this every year just to reorganize or organize. So are there any nominations?
So I'd like to nominate Sarah as chair and Sue Philbrick as vice chair.
Second.
Any special? All in favor?
Hi.
I think. Great, well, thank you for your confidence and now Sue and I do work well together. We're one team here, so great, thank you. The next thing is we actually have no other, no A and Rs or other business that, so that worked out perfectly. Tonight, we have Kathy McCabe with us. As you saw her proposal, if you guys didn't, you know, we have engaged Kathy to help us with some planning around the downtown. When we did the MBTA task force work, we identified the downtown as being vulnerable to changes. We know that we have some challenges with economic development with open unleased properties. And it seems to be on everybody's mind. So Kathy, introduce yourself and lead us. Okay. We are, it looks like we don't have too many people online, only Jane, hi Jane. But we're going to engage pretty much with ourselves for starters. If we have time, we'll do some public comment, but we're going to, it's going to be a discussion among ourselves. And I know Brian and Sandy are coming up to speed. Don't worry, this is a beginning, not an end.
Well, and thank you and congratulations for your new arrival status as planning board members. I'm Kathy McCabe and I'm a planning consultant. I've been working in this space of downtown revitalization, maybe planning and economic development for more years than I'd like to remember. But I have a background that I've been on Boston Landmarks Commissioner, Commissioner in the past. So I understand historic districts as well as the economics of downtown revitalization. And I'm also a daughter of a small business owner, so that kind of gives me a different insight. So I was going to downtown committees and taking minutes when I was in, you know, high school. So I have a long interest and commitment to downtowns. And basically what our proposal was, was to be able to help you do some initial visioning and discussion and kind of build some consensus on the vision for the future of downtown Manchester, or at least take an initial cut at it. But also not just vision, but because sometimes as planners, we look long term and we think about vision, but people want action. So we want, so we want to make sure that we identify some short term, you know, low hanging fruit action steps. Because oftentimes when you're in discussions of visioning, people start identifying things that we should do. So we kind of have a dual purpose. And that kind of fits my approach to things because I think you need to, implementation is key to planning and building public confidence and sustaining public confidence and planning. And that's why my emails, McCabe, that plan do, because I like to plan, but I also like to do something to make a difference. So that's kind of our scope, you know, kind of broad brush scope. We're anticipating doing a community workshop that's going to be participatory at your next planning board meeting, which is Monday, June 9th. And I've talked to Sarah and Mark about, I think they're looking, working through the logistics and probably will involve you on some of that. And encouraging members of other boards and committees and your neighbors so that we get a lot, many voices. So that we can, you know, and the more voices that participate, the better from my perspective. Because you can always narrow down, but we got to call and get all the, all the, you know, all the ideas out there. So we're into, we're going to do it in the evening. Probably going to be two plus hours. I don't want to burn the midnight oil, but it's not, you know, but having a discussion takes some time and we, we need to work through issues. But I would really want to start with a discussion now, because we talked about downtown, but I have a question for you about, and maybe we can just go around like a round table and then is what makes downtown Manchester special to you?
It's a walkable distance from my home. And there's certain basic services that I use. I also feel that there's certainly basic services that used to exist in the town for families and then are gone and have not been replaced. And I'm not sure where. So does that give you a sense?
It's however you want to answer. It's very broad, but it's like, let's focus on what's special because that's really important to know and identify what's important to people. So anyone can jump in.
So agree with what Sandy said. Love that it is walkable. It's, I think it's well proportioned to the size of the town. I think that it could definitely be better land as far as it's, I mean, for a town our size, it's kind of seems like there's a little sprawl in there because you've got like two ends to it. And I wonder if by consolidating it a little, you could eliminate some of the issues that are existing right now with storefronts. I'm concerned, my concern is that, you know, you've heard people talk about the dynamics of downtown and how they seem to be changing because there are less and less retailers there and the categories of retail that are there are, I mean, real estate pretty much dominates a lot of downtown. And I just wonder if with spiraling real estate costs and the required rent to, to allow those, if they are investments, to work, that it's unsustainable. It may not be possible to have sustainable businesses in there. So I just, I'm really curious about the model as it exists today and whether there is a different model that we could consider. I don't know what that is. And I will say too, that prior to this, we had talked about spending some time with a master plan. It's interesting because I basically looked at it for the comprehensively for the first time since I've lived the town. And I've been here for 30 plus years. About that plan was what, 2017, is that when it was released? And a lot of the concerns that were outlined in that plan are exactly what we're hearing now. So that's, that supports my point of how, how can you fix it? It just seems to be, you know, a continuing carousel, really. I think what's going to be really telling is what happens with the cargo unlimited building. And I think that's a really important piece to our downtown. And I think we need to be really careful about the outcome of the, at least the, the first floor of that as it pertains to the rest of downtown. And there's been some conversation in this board that I've listened to and agree with about how the town is in jeopardy of being disconnected. And that's why I talk about possibly trying to intentionally bring it more together. I'm not, again, I'm not a planner by trade, so I'm not sure how you do that. But you can just see it beginning to fray on the edges and what's happening is the middle is getting impacted.
So you've been really good at diagnostics. What's special to you?
Yeah, I think everything that I just provided diagnostics for, I think it's a, as I said, it's a manageable town for the size, the, the physical size of our town. I think it, to Sandy's point, it's got the uses that are important to a town. It's, it's in character with the rest of the town. Yeah, I'm not sure what else I could say right now, but I'm sure I'll hear some things from others here that will resonate too.
Yeah. So me, I honestly can't differentiate the downtown from the rest of the town. I mean, the reason why I came here, my speech the other night, the reason why I came here is because I love this little town. I love it. I love the size, the shape, access to schools, the fact you can walk, you can ride a bike to the beach and all of that, all of those features and the downtown itself too. It's, it's just a great place to live. Of the downtown itself, honestly, this is my, I background is in real estate development. So I'm not, I'm not unfamiliar with, not this particular type of challenge, but I'm, I'm unfamiliar with the process of coming in and making things better. I guess, I think this is it, what we're about to embark on is really, really a positive thing for us. I really think it's, it's kind of like an untapped, untapped wealth of things to do in this town and yet, yet to happen. And I think the palette is kind of laid up and in some odd sort of way, having the tenants not entering here, not going into leases in here actually may give us an opportunity to turn something around and utilize those spaces for something else. And so beyond that, I just love it here. I love the small town. And I see this as very much of a positive effort moving forward. Let's do it.
I have a long list of things that I'd like us to talk about for improving, but in terms of what makes it special, my husband and I always say that Manchester has a strong sense of community and you can go, you can get what you need to survive COVID in Manchester and downtown. There's a hardware store, there's a pharmacy, and there's a really good grocery store and a bank. And.
And a dry cleaners.
Liquor store.
And liquor store, right? And, and some restaurants. So, and you go to the restaurants and you see people you know, and you go to the grocery store and you see people you know, and you go to the post office to see people now. So I like the fact that you see people you know and that, but it is part of a larger. I think also there's a wonderful park where kids play soccer and then there's the bandstand. And I see that as part of, an important part of downtown. And I think the jewel of Manchester is the harbor. And the harbor views, I think, are not to be, are critical to preserve. And I, and the harbor view and the harbor and the parks that are there are a really important part of downtown. And I'll hold on opportunities to have a long list. Yeah, worries.
So for me, actually, I think the harbor is a resource that we turned our back on. It's our back door, it's not our front door, which is a huge mistake. But my son refers to Manchester, he lives in Brooklyn, and he calls Manchester busy town, you know, Richard Scarry's busy town. Because we've got every little thing that's in busy town. We have the grocery store, the harbor store, the liquor store, the library, the bookstore, you know, there, every little. So that I think is, that's, I think, one of the charming things about the town. And the third one is the diversity of architecture. We don't have a style, we're not Nantucket, we're not Litchfield, Connecticut. It's, it's this vast array of different kinds of buildings that make the town very special, including the fact that half the downtown is residential. There are single family homes in this downtown with front lots. So that's sort of interesting also.
I'll say what makes it special for me is the recreation and leisure activities for families in particular that the downtown offers. Folks have touched on the public parks, so Mascanoma Park is right there. We have a great harbor view, we have the beach. You can really spend a whole afternoon or day asterisk in the right season with your family downtown. But I think that downtown is ripe for so much more opportunities with things like the summer concert series we have at Mascanoma Park. Those, you know, family oriented activities that draw folks to the downtown, having more planned offerings and more for people to do to spend their money and time in the downtown will be great.
No, I think they've pretty much covered a lot of the things that people like when they have worked in a number of towns with little centers and reasons why people like it. Sense of community, activities, the opportunity to get what you need, all those types of things, everything's here. So I think, think everyone's mentioned those types of things. So I, I, you know, water for, I mean, there's, there's a lot of positive things here, so.
Along with the positive things, and it's really helpful to hear. And I'm also proposing these questions to the, to the downtown improvement committee. As well as the historic district commission. So I'm not just picking on you, but you know, I'm looking for common themes. And it just also helps me get immersed in those shit and also help us prepare for the community workshop on the ninth.
Can I ask a question of you Kathy? What's your impression of the town?
I think you have a really walkable downtown. You have an amazing array of different business types. The harbor and the park being in close proximity. You see, you seem to be trying to figure out how to balance cars, pedestrians and bikes, which is not easy in any downtown. And for having a state road through, through downtown, you're doing it pretty successfully. Is there room for improvement? There's always room for improvement. So I've always, you know, I've driven through, through Manchester many times because I used to have in-laws in Magnolia. So I was more, I'm more, a little more familiar with Magnolia, but I, Manchester always caught my eye, you know? So it's kind of like, oh, we should stop, you know, it was, you know, but you know, we're always in a hurry because you know, running, you know, when you have been to the events. So, so I would, I would, overall, I think it's really positive. And I, and the comments that I'm hearing is, it's not just about the, it's about the place, but also the people in the place and the warmth and friendship of, you know, that having a small downtown and seeing people you know and your neighbors kind of reinforces. So I think it's, it strikes me as, as part of the heart of your town, an important part of the heart of your town.
So I think there are three misconceptions that people have about the town. And the first one is, is that we have a parking and traffic problem. And it is true that maybe on six weekends a year, we do have a traffic and parking.
I didn't say you had a problem. I said, I think you're looking.
No, no, no.
Balancing it.
But I think, I think residents have the perception that there's a parking problem. And that tends to quash any kinds of talk about more retail or.
I will say, if there's a downtown that doesn't have a parking problem, it probably has a business development problem.
Well, we're only using 65% of our available parking.
Right, I mean, but when you have so much parking and you can, you know, park anywhere, it means you don't have enough customers. So if there's a chicken and egg issue.
Well, there's a second misconception, which is that the market here is a high end affluent market. And in fact, most of the businesses in downtown don't cater to the wealthy people. They cater to blue collar, the market is really a blue collar market. The rich people all go to other places to do their fancy shopping and eating. And the third misconception is that Manchester is a destination. And it is true, singing beach is a destination, but nothing else in town really is. We're, we're on the road from Beverly to Gloucester.
Magnolia.
And they know, yeah. And people don't come here to, because the downtown is here, they come because they're passing through for the most part.
They come because of singing beach.
Yeah, that's, but that's only, you know, that's a few weekends a year.
Or no, when they come to walk their dogs to singing beach.
Well, that's true.
Huge.
Or play pickleball on a court.
Yes, or play pickleball on a court. Yeah, I was going to say, I kind of broke the opportunities or the, the needs into a bunch of categories. I do think we have to, our zoning, it makes us very vulnerable right now to conversions to residential. And with parking in front along the street space, that's, that's clear to me anyway, that we don't, and we don't allow mixed use. The, we have some needs for public services, like the bathroom, public bathrooms. We have needs for economic development. You know, really thoughtful economic development that says, you know, Manchester is the place where you come for whatever it is. And that, there were two supplements that just came out. And if you look at the things to do in Manchester and both of those, the concerts weren't in there, the, you know, the, the things that we already have were missing from one of them entirely. And so we're not doing a good job of promoting and our businesses weren't highlighted. And so for whatever reason in the, in the, that, not the cricket one, but the other ones, there, we were, you know, the Gloucester Times when it was like Salisbury to Marblehead. And Manchester got like this much space. So it, we're, we're not publicizing, it's an economic development effort, it needs to be, you know, we need to spend some effort on that, I think, to promote what we have. And I wonder sort of to Chris's point about who the businesses have served historically. I think they have largely served the people who are here. And this, and you know, some people that pass through, but and I'd be curious to know if my hunch is right or not, you know, the people come and have, you know, the townspeople. And I do think that there's another side of the economic development, which is called commerce. And, you know, any of us who have our doctor send prescriptions to CVS instead of Allen's, we're part of the problem. You know, to the extent that we never go to Crosby's, then we're part of the problem. If we go to Home Depot and never go to the hardware store, we're part of the problem. And, you know, I think we're all guilty, we, the townspeople are all guilty of that. There's Amazon and those other things, but, you know, I worry about the aging of some of the business owners. You know, we need, if Allen's is going to continue to be a pharmacy, then somebody, the owner's going to sell it someday, whether it's tomorrow or in 20 years. And in order for it to be a valuable pharmacy, my prescriptions need to go there. So then I go in and buy my toothpaste too. So I think we could communicate to the townspeople their role in some of that, as part of an economic development strategy. I mean, it's, you know, we need to say, keep your business in town. And perceived parking, I think future flooding is a real, is not even future. And then the other thing is the economics of the rental of whatever the first floors are going to be, given that many of our buildings are very, are aging. Many of the, not our, you know, the private, private, the real estate is, you know, if you look across the street, that building is 200 years old and it's, you know, got powder in the, in the, you don't have to look too hard to see the condition of that building. So the bill, many of our buildings in the town need, in the downtown in particular, need significant investment. And in this market, that's the economics of that concern me. And I don't know what the answer to that is, I don't, but it's part of the thing that, among the things we need to think about with, there's incentives or there are help we can give, so.
I have a couple of comments and a couple of questions.
Yeah, I was, you know, kind of piggybacking on Sarah's comments. My next question was speaking about what are your concerns about downtown? And I think Sarah had a litany of concerns, so, you know.
I have a couple of comments.
Okay.
One, I think I disagree with you, Chris, about not being a destination. Because I think we are a destination, not just for singing beach, but the harbor that you both mentioned is a destination. And buying for whatever complications these cause, and then working hard to make the harbor a destination. So people, to make places where people can park their boats, walk into town, pick up a sandwich, you know, do whatever. So, so I think it is currently a destination for sailors as well as singing beach folks. And a lot of people do come up on the train and walk down to singing beach because we're probably the closest walkable beach. The second thing is, I think that I find, and I got a correction sort of from my daughter. It was very interesting, I was talking to her about the downtown. And I think there are demographics that are missing. One that I'm keenly aware, when we first came to town 26 years ago, there were lots of places, shops that had things for kids. There were at least three places, you know, candy store with Alice, there were, and there were two different toy stores. Now toys are different, but toys for kids from zero to five, maybe, you know, there's still toy stores for kids that age. So, so there's a demographic around kids and school kids, in particular, the younger school, elementary school kids. Because there is a freedom that kids have here to move around. And when it's an early release day, kids used to go downtown, get fried mozzarella sticks and a cream soda, right? So, you know, so that's a missing piece, I think. And then that's a little bit looking backwards, but looking forwards, there is this new development, this biotech development on the other side of the highway. And so there's going to be a whole bunch of biotech workers, so people who are in their twenties and thirties, you know? And how do we get them downtown and what, what do they want? And I guess my big question to you is, how do we figure out what people want? You know, both those, I mean, children, I mean, how do you figure that out? And because we've got a, you know, ladies dress shop, real estate, I mean, some basic good things, but you know, there's no, and, and there could be. If, and I don't know how you would actually do this, but if you've got a really great restaurant here, you might find people coming to town for that restaurant. Um, I'm not sure what it would be. I mean, I certainly have some ideas, but I, you know, what the heck? I mean, that's my idea. What, what are people looking for? Not another Italian pub food place, please. Sorry, guys. Anyway, and that's about it.
But I think, and that's something that I said, just to, um, build on what you just said about there not being any toy stores in town anymore. I don't know, and that was my point. I don't know that there will ever be another toy store in town, just because, because of the ease of, and, and the, and the habits of the way people are purchasing now. I just don't, I don't know. That, that's just a hunch. I don't, I don't have any evidence to back it up, other than just watching retail trends. I think we have, we have a lot of services downtown, which I think all downtowns need. Um, and I agree with Sarah. I think that those services are all very good services too. And I mean, I think you nailed it. The Crosby, the, I think Allen's and, um, the hardware store is awesome. I mean, they've got a great selection there, and I agree with, that's, that's something that we've gotta create awareness around, is that these services are available in town.
I don't say, I wanna talk to the toy store. Cause kids don't buy online, parents buy online, but kids don't. And there are times when I do see children still coming from the school to, to go downtown. But there's really no place for them to shop anymore, where they're gonna shop. Yeah. So it's, well, no, yeah, yeah.
Toys.
Not much. I mean, compared to what there used to be, no. And if you go, why can Gloucester have a great toy store and we don't? You know, so.
But is there a toy store?
Oh, there's a toy store on Main Street. That's great. If you have nieces or nephews or grandchildren, whatever, in the zero to five, six-year-old range.
Yes.
Got terrific toys.
No, you're right. They used to, if you, if you got a ten-dollar bill from your grandmother, you could go downtown and spend it, you know, and spend, should I get that or get that, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Get some cheesy little girl earrings or buy a puzzle or whatever.
One, one thing that dominates.
What, Peter had mentioned many of his concerns, uh, earlier. So what are some of your other concerns about downtown?
So one of, one of the problems in town is that the primary retail spaces are occupied by real estate brokers. And they don't, they, they're not opening the vitality of the town.
Right.
And in fact, they're usually empty because the brokers are out showing houses or working for.
Cause you return to, it's right across the street. It's a billboard. There are five, what, how many? There's?
Four of them in the, four or five in the downtown, yeah. And they're all empty.
Yeah.
I worry about the pressure, I worry most net, um, most right now about the pressure for, um, the market for real estate. I mean, you can't buy anything in Manchester pretty much under a million dollars. And with the harbor views from some of the downtown locations and our current zoning, I think we could see, you know, the sovereign bank convert to housing, the Harbor Point, um, convert to housing. That, um, and that, that's my biggest immediate concern, I think.
Can I say something about that? Because I was, in the current master plan, the average median home value in Manchester in two thousand seventeen was nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, this media, meaning, right, the median value now is like nine hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars.
I think it's one point one.
Well, I, okay, well, I looked it up on, on our website.
Not that much more, is what your point is.
Yeah, it, is that, it, I mean, that issue existed back then too.
It is not unique to Manchester. That's, it, this is not a, I don't think the affordability problem is something that is at all unique to Manchester. Um, but the dollars on the upper end for some of these conversions may create greater pressure for Manchester than, than they do for other places. Um, so, um, that's just my opinion, but I'm, I'm not a real estate.
The pressure, I mean, what, I, I don't know what the rent will be for, what was seven central, what's the rent gonna be in? He, the owner of that building at, uh, one that's being stripped right now, said he's gonna put commercial down there too. What's the rent gonna be there? The point is, are they gonna be, um, sustainable options for people to run a business, right?
That is a great question.
But I don't know how you overcome that.
And yet you look at the, how much they're having to put into the buildings, clearly putting in a lot of dollars.
I think the adding residential and keeping residential, for example, at School Street, as opposed to converting the whole building to commercial, is what subsidizing and allows you to maintain the commercial space. So, um, you know, as we talk about zoning, that's kind of what we need to think about is, you know, just letting someone have to renovate a commercial space for just commercial cost is not very cost effective. And, um, rents they'd have to charge would be astronomical unless it's your own building with your own business, so. Um, that's, so I think I, at least, you know, maintaining in some way the opportunity for residential, but not completely residential.
Yeah. Mixed use is really.
And we're gonna see more, uh, development proposals like the one at Cargo, where they may maintain its tiny little commercial sliver there, just to keep up with the downtown um, idea, but the rest will be residential. It's the same with, what, Seven Central? They're doing the same thing, right?
They're at least putting a little bit back.
Exactly.
Where it hasn't existed in the past.
Right. And maybe that's the right size. Maybe that's.
Maybe that's, that's all you get is storefronts, but, you know, that maintains the vitality. You know, and even having some res- real estate offices doesn't, as long as it's part of a continuous stream of storefronts, isn't necessarily a bad thing. People stop, they look. It's not a break, like a parking lot or the house, endless streetscape of storefronts.
I think the idea is if you're coming to shop for a house, you will go to the realtor and then you're gonna go to the other places in town. It, it is a, a reason to come to Manchester, but, um, I just, I, um, there are two ideas I had, um, you know, that I thought about this and what, sort of in the short run, um, the library wants to expand. We've got empty downtown spaces. How do we bring that, though? How do we take some of that library functions that they want to expand to, to, uh, to some of the space for a five-year period? The other thing is, what are the, um, community-based organizations who have offices? What am I, but I'll talk to them first before I say that in a public session. But what, what are the community organizations who have office space, small little office space, who could be incentivized to come and have office in downtown? That's offices, but if they're a public kind of organization, perhaps part of the incentive was they, in their office hours, they provide public bathrooms in exchange for some sort of, um, you know, some sort of incentives. Um, I, who are the, that, you know, um, and what, what, what's their raw, um, office space isn't the same as a toy store, but certainly it's better than vacant.
Oh, for sure.
And library programs are good for the, um, they bring people into libraries.
And it's all demographics too.
And it's a, a range of demographics. So it's just the two thoughts, um, that I was wondering about in the short run, um, could we, and who else is looking to, you know?
I think to go back to Peter's point a little bit about, um, the expense of commercial retail space. Um, do we have any way as part of the work you're doing to learn, e- even if it's a confidential sort of way, to get a sense of what's the range of rents? So you can begin to think about, well, you know, you might have some artist sort of stuff, you might, you know.
I think, uh, downtown improvement.
You talked about that already. It's between twenty and forty dollars a square foot annual rented.
Twenty to forty.
That's, that's a wide range, depending on space and size, everything, but that's, that's pretty much what we're looking.
And that's current information?
Very, very current.
Yeah, okay.
Is it correct? Do they do the, is the downtown improvement goal to every real, every owner here and figure that out? No. But there was, there's enough people on the downtown improvement committee, they're aware of, of what the rents are.
Uh, okay, so there was no actual survey?
No. So what the downtown improvement is, you, you probably know this already. They're bringing in the owners of spaces to the downtown improvement meetings to get their opinion, rather than just decide something out and then open another. They're actually engaging them to figure out what the, how better to do it.
I would just say, there's two things in the, in response to your question. In terms of this assignment, it's very short-term and it's very low budget. So, um, and that's not to say that that's not a good question. It is a good question. Uh, I would say my experience with trying to get, um, really accurate numbers on per square foot, it's always a range. And what, it also varies that some people still charge by the month. Uh, if it's an investor-owned building, um, that's relatively recent, they're doing by the square foot, but it also depends upon, is it triple net or is it just a straight, on, you know, forty dollars triple net?
Suddenly sixty.
Triple net meaning that you pay, you pay, the tenant pays the taxes, they pay the insurance, and they pay for all, all maintenance and utilities. So.
You're right. It's not, not a, a hard thing. You could put your, plus it changes depending on the, the climate.
Yes. And everything's negotiable, you know? Commercial leasing is much more difficult to put your finger on, particularly retail spaces. Cause it also depends upon where you are in the business district and your visibility. And does it, you know, what's your access point? So it's, you know, on residential, you can look at per square foot, whether it's, you know, how many bedrooms, how many bathrooms. You know, harbor views, no harbor views, you know, first floor, second floor, third floor, walk up or elevator. Those are kind of your basic variables. Whereas in retail, who are you next to sometimes makes a big difference. Um, so it's, there's.
One of the things, oh, I just wanna point out is that with our, going back to our current zoning, um, are, the thing that may slow our residential conversions in our, with our current zoning is we don't really allow mixed use. But you could convert from commercial to, um, residential. But the, we do have requirements for residential parking spaces on the lot. And some of these lots don't have any way to do that, so it would need a variance for that. So in the short, that could keep us, that could, could help us at least if we, you know, slow down. That would help us slow that down a little bit. Um, and then we can think about whether that's a reas- the right requirement once we create perhaps a new zoning change. Um, I do think we would be well-served to address the zoning, do something around the, this cargo, cargo unlimited, um, sale and future unknown, I think, has got a lot of people's attention. And so it's a good time for us to, even if we have to do something in two steps, in my opinion.
I would agree with that.
Yes.
Both sense.
So I wanna go back to Sandy's destination argument. Most destination places have places where visitors could come and stay.
That's not.
We don't have, and not only that, but we have a very strict short-term rental policy in the town. And we don't even allow ADUs to be used as short-term rentals. And I wonder, one of the things we could do for, as part of our downtown zoning, is to allow those in the downtown, not in the neighborhoods, but just so that we can encourage people to put up visitors to the town in the downtown area.
Meaning, meaning what, Chris? What were you?
So let's say you have an apartment above a store.
So if you live in the downtown, you, you're able to do it, say.
I'm saying that those apartments should be maybe made easier to be short-term rentals.
Yeah.
To encourage visitors to come and stay.
Or we don't allow an inn.
We don't allow it in. Maybe we should allow a small inn.
Yeah.
So speaking of, and Sandy, you mentioned this too, and I think what we wanna keep in mind through this process is there is a variable that we have not experienced during this conversation in the past, and that is cell signaling. Right? I mean, there, eventually, three years from now, four years from now, there're gonna be a lot of people out there. And they're gonna be looking for things to do at lunch and breakfast, and that's gonna help revitalize downtown, I would think. Um, and I also, I don't know what the status is of SLV, but if something ever happened there, suddenly you're gonna have, I mean, the population too, looking back at what the population was in Manchester, when the first master plan was done, it was like fifty-six hundred people. It's less than that now. So, um, you know, that might have something to do with what's going on downtown as well. We're not really growing as a, as a town. We're actually shrinking, but we do have a couple of, um, variables that are gonna at least, um, during the daytime, increase the size of our population and hopefully benefit downtown. And we gotta be ready for that too, right? I mean, I know we put some, uh, conditions in the special apartment for cell signaling around downtown. Did, not, we couldn't really do that, but we talked about it, and they did say that they intended to have shuttles or whatever to get people downtown, but that, I think that's could, could help quite a bit.
How many people said, I have two fifties stuck in my mind, including the first base, first base, you know, a lot of them working home and those kinds.
Right, true. There'll probably be no one in there. But, um.
But I just have one thought on the, you know, the seasonality component, um, is big too, just that, I think Peter mentioned that earlier too, is, um, you know, businesses coming in, what can stick around? Um, have we ever thought about doing some sort of exploring like a co-op model or like some, I know, I know there have been these kind of partnership models where you have, you know, maybe a shared kitchen with a couple of food stalls, and then maybe you have like a community tie-in that has kind of an outreach program that's involved there, so that a building could share various uses throughout the year and pop-ups and tenants could come and go with what makes sense. Um, I don't know how that would work in somewhere like Manchester with our population, but.
Well, I think, um, right now, if you look at the map, the, the parcel maps, each parcel in each building is separate. Some of them have common owners, many of them have common ownership, however. Um, so that's perhaps an opportunity, but I think everything has kind of happened, is my sense. There's not been a downtown plan. Um, there's been downtown improvement, have done a lot of work on the sidewalks and the lights and those were all upgraded, um, fine, um, upgraded. There was a big downtown improvement project like twenty years ago at this point. Um, before the high school, so twenty years ago. Um, and, uh, I know.
Yikes.
I know. So, um, you know, I, I think it's been organic. It's a building owner has a tenant, the tenant leaves, they get a new tenant, the tenant leaves, they get a new tenant. These upgrades, they, you know, you think about the coffee cup changing to whatever it was, to whatever it was, to James.
Boring, to Jamie's.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was funny.
Go, um, for, for whatever reason, the market, it's all been market. The market hasn't said, let's bring back the coffee cup, which was kind of a diner. The market hasn't said that, or the, there isn't a person who has said, I want, that's a great place for a diner. I know it used to be a diner, even though we all can say, oh, wouldn't it be nice if that was a diner or Peggy's Sub Shop or whatever the, I, whatever Facebook said today that whatever parcel should have, what, not, you know, could, why don't we bring back whatever sacks or? Whatever sacks or whatever the your favorite. Uh, and it there hasn't been a plan or a uh, it's been organically um driven by entrepreneurs. Who and business owners who are looking for a spot and think, you know, and I do know that to to Chris's. Uh, earlier point is that it's not a destination or and a lot of times there are have been stores have come in thinking that. It's a high end retail market and it's actually not, they've said over and over. It's not a high end retail market, I'm gonna actually take up and go to Marvel, you know, because that's a. Thirty thousand people versus five. And, you know.
Is there, is there currently a downtown association of merchants? That I know I've been reading that the chamber, the Cape Van Chamber is very active and helps Manchester a lot, but is there a Manchester specific?
There is a Manchester subgroup of the Cape Van Chamber, but they're not very active.
Yeah. Brown is very active in with all emergency time, right, it's also the head of the Cape Van Chamber.
It's more just Jim Brown.
Can I can I be a downer for a second? Isn't there a reality though that small towns, small needs? Basic services are 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 key to us for staying, for maintaining of, and I know we're talking about high end. I know, Chris, you've talked about artist communities, which is really attractive here. And and you you just mentioned something that really gets me going here is that. The the downtown has grown organically, there is no organization to it, there's no. It's not there's giant spaces between buildings and then there's to cram together enough spaces here. So it's it's a, it's 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 also, it's in addition to the type of merchants that we may want here. It's also the the physical setting down there, the infrastructure that we have. Is not conducive to that nice, small downtown vibrant parking everywhere, it just it just isn't. So I I think there's a reality that we have to face, not that we have to give into it, cause I'm still very positive for it, but it is something that. It's true, small populations, small demands, in the wintertime, I'm not here in the wintertime, at least in years past, but I know I'm sure it's very.
Every Monday.
I'm here every Monday, it's very quiet here in the in the.
Here, um.
I wouldn't say that today, but.
Yeah. There was a very interesting thing, I mean, it was a little bit of a. I was very interested to hear what people had to say about the feeling of community and going to the store and meeting somebody you know. Blah blah blah, all that, right? So, um, as it, in inadvertently, because they came to us. There was an MIT class that, yeah. And um, they, to to your point about no, you know, it hasn't been directed in terms of. How things have kind of just occurred, it's it's both entrepreneurship, but it's interacting with the existing zoning too. And the existing owners, but this MIT crew, a bunch of young people came. And they asked a question that has stuck in my mind ever since. They said, why did you pave over pretty much the area where you can sit and look at the harbor? You know, like the whole harbor point is paved basically, right? So I think it's a good question, and they had some intriguing answers to alternatives for.
Taking Crosby's and moving it across the street.
No, no, that, you know. That that it 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 was a good exercise, I found, to bump up against. Because we all come from our own histories and what we're accustomed to and habits. And they had a couple of pretty interesting ideas, I thought, and we might want to fold it into our deliberations a little bit here.
So what was their, what was their conclusion today? This is what you were talking to me about, right?
Yeah, so the their conclusion was that if you want to take advantage of the harbor, you gotta visit it. And it's only visible from beyond the railroad tracks essentially. So the their idea of taking Crosby's and moving across the street wasn't crazy from an urban planning point of view. It was to create a a focal point in the town where you could sit and look at the harbor and be in the middle of the downtown.
Yeah, but there might be a way to do that without moving.
Well, there might be, and of course, we have the.
No, no.
Parking lot right out here, which is more, you know, more paving right up against the waterfront, it's ridiculous.
Well, there are all opportunities to think about and, you know, we'll have to workshop to kind of think through some of that. Um, so.
I wanted to be sure you knew about that MIT.
I did, so I did, you know, so I'm trying to figure out which faculty member. I I happen to be an MIT grad, so I.
Okay, great.
So I I'm curious about which faculty members.
Uh, I have his email address, I can get it to you.
We have the report.
And the report.
But I think that it it actually raises the question that is, who is our downtown for? And I think um people, one of the things that always comes up is, I was, I had dinner with somebody and we were talking about downtown. And he said, I want it to be vibrant and I don't want any more people. I don't want it to, I don't want to be a tourist destination, and I think we have tried to walk that line. And the tourists stay the singing beach side of the railroad track. You know, and um, so that is a real tension and um. You got to stand up off the beat first and then. But the the Mascanoma Park parking lot on the point is actually exactly that. Because I happened to be down there today, um, taking a phone call, pulled in. And there are many people, there's a, there was a council, a um, like a nursing home van. And they had parked there and they had the people walk just a few steps to the point. And there are a lot of people who enjoy the water from their car a year round, because there's parking there. So I think that's it's a interest, it's a complete antithesis to good urban planning. But the way it gets used, we would might want to think about whether that's, I think it's, but it's a little bit about who's it for. You know, that parking, why is it paved that way? Because it's close to the commercial fishermen, because it's close to the harbor dock. And a lot of people actually year round and day and night, like nighttime, sit there in their cars. Smoking or reading the paper, having, go down there in the morning. Because seriously, you have six or ten cars.
Sarah, I was talking about that parking, I was talking about the parking that's uh surrounds.
Yeah, right, but that anyway, but all, but there is park, there is, um, but I think it raises the larger question about. Who is our downtown for? Now, Essex folks come to Crosby's, I believe. You know, for the quick thing that they need, because they don't have a grocery store and Magnolia folks.
And I think it also helps to think about what is the definition of a tourist? Because technically, a tourist is someone who travels at least fifty miles and stays overnight. So that is what kind of, when you do tourism data analysis, that's what you're really looking at. Sometimes I think people are using that and it it speaks to, Chris, your reference that we're not a. Manchester is not a tourist destination because we don't have overnight stays. But the question then is, what about visitors?
Day trippers.
And you know, visitors are, you know, are really people who travel, you know. Um, less than, you know, an hour, two hours, may do a day trip, may do a half day trip, maybe, you know. Um, you know, you have also friends and relatives who may stay with some people here, maybe there's, you know, overnighting. At, you know, there is a B and B in Magnolia, um, you know, or or Gloucester or Beverly. Um, but they're visiting family here, so I mean, uh, yeah. You know, there's probably some impressions of what a tourist destination is that people don't want. And maybe it's, let's learn about what people don't want about a tourist destination, so we don't go that direction. But businesses may need more people than who just live within Manchester.
Yeah, I think I think downtown's a change, it's not just Manchester.
Right.
Um, people are shopping online, that's just the reality of it, big box stores. You know, you have a long list of stuff you're gonna get, you're not gonna go to the hardware store, you'll go get the hooks and the little stuff. But that you forgot, but if you're building something or doing some major project, you go on Home Depot or some other place. Um, kind of what I'm hearing is what we may want to, people have to accept that. Downtown can't be just for the people who live here. Uh, if you want it to be vibrant and busy and have storefronts and that kind of stuff, but. You, no matter what, I don't think Manchester is ever gonna be a true tourist destination. We can change all the streets, get like and improve and come up with plans to improve the parks. And improve the parking lots and make everything cute and quaint and perfect. And you're still not gonna become, even build a hotel and an inn and it's still not gonna become a true tourist destination. You're just too small, you don't have enough room, enough land area to develop, that type of stuff. But you can attract visitors, whether those visitors are the two hundred and fifty people working at CST. Who might go out to lunch or grab, didn't work late and grab dinner because they don't want to cook. Uh.
Or the boaters.
They didn't get a chance to go sh- do their laundry and they need to buy a shirt for the next day, whatever the issue is. They will support the businesses if you have the right mix of things, it's attractive, it's easy to get to, there's parking. Which you do have, you do have parking, but it's gonna be a nice place to go. Same thing, one twenty seven, you mentioned, it's a state road. How many people, thousands of people drive through downtown Manchester on their way somewhere else and don't stop? You don't think about stopping if you're not from Manchester, so to speak, or saw the movie or something like that. So you need to create a uniqueness of that when people come around the corner and they go, oh, here's downtown. There's a spot, let's pull over, give them reasons to linger, give them reasons to spend some money while they're here. You're not gonna be competing with true tourist destinations, but you certainly can do better job. Through all various types of public improvements, um.
And to expand on that, Mark, what various types?
Well, streetscape is one that's been mentioned a bunch of times, clearly that's one.
But it's again.
Streetscape, streetscape, making your your downtown a unique place. Um, you see it in lots of places, brick sidewalks, the the formula is pretty much the same, but how you implement it locally is what's really important. The fine tuning, you know, the the parking, the bump outs, making it safe for people to cross, make slowing traffic down. Uh, proper signage uh to where the parking is, uh, nice uh lit in. Uh, attractive walkways from one place to another, places to linger around along the waterfront. With comfortable benches and a walkway and shade trees and all those types of things. I mean, you can, I mean, I, we could take a little walk around downtown and I could point out. You know, as we move through different places, things that you could be done to make it more attractive. And that's what what people like when they're taking their day um to go visit someone. They they may go wanna go to Rockport, but they drive through and they go, oh, this is cute, let's stop. Haven't seen these and this before, so, um. So there's there's uh, there's that thing, and then that makes it, you know, the more attractive for the local people. And it helps supports the other storefronts that you want to keep open, so that you have more choices as a resident. So those those are just some of the things, the other couple things for opportunities, you do have, like you mentioned, the library and town hall. They bring people, local people to the downtown, the senior center, opening one. And back here is gonna be uh quite helpful as well, um. Parking and uh, so, um. Yeah, and and expanding the docks in the summertime, I was talking to one of the harbor masters today. He said last year brought in like over four hundred thousand dollars and went to the town boaters. And just think about how much additional money they've spent in all the stores and the restaurants.
Was the four hundred grand.
I think that's what they they.
That's the estimate from the number of people who are using the.
Buy on.
A tree on, the transient docks, I think it's a, it's a extrapolation. It's a guesstimate, I'm not sure, it's a.
It's a.
How is it? I didn't, I didn't go into detail about where the number came from, but.
We can talk about that.
Well, you're on the harbor management.
Yes, but um. I think that I'm gonna. Again, I want to think about, I I like to think about what we can do soon, and I was thinking about, um. You know, the kiosks at every hotel. Every bed and breakfast in Gloucester, do they have a a thing that says come to Manchester because? You can go to Singing Beach, it's twenty, you know, you gotta pay a day fee, but you know, and then you can go to these three restaurants. Four restaurants, five restaurants, whatever it is, and um, you know, is there something there? How how did we miss the boat on those summer uh uh things to do? Um, short term, like short term beautification, like, can we engage a? Next year, a um. One of the student, the senior projects um to, you know, put window boxes on every. You know, business with, a lot of businesses really do a nice job already and then have friends of trees water them. Or, you know, like, what are those short term things that we can, that can be done? And who's gonna do them and how they're gonna get paid for, and then. The idea is that that creates also a an opportunity, because well, if we had a couple of anchor stores or retail establishment. The thing that people are gonna come for, I can only get my widget. At the widget store in Manchester, um, I don't know how you'd find that thing. Um, but then people come for that and stay for the the beer, whatever.
So there are just.
Have some anchors.
Yes, we do.
Library is one of your anchors, Town Hall is one of your.
But I don't think anybody's coming from out of town to come to Town Hall unless they want to get married.
Well, there is stores that draw, I mean, you know, restaurants often draw. I I think your restaurants may have more of a localized market than a draw market, um.
But nobody knows about them, but two perhaps, you know.
Marketing is, you have to do marketing these days and I heard that several times, so.
I mean, maybe it's happening more than I know too.
So there's things like farmers markets pop up and it's, uh, well, it's interesting, we have a lobster fleet here, but you can't buy a lobster down, which is.
Well, maybe you figure out one or two that maybe, you know, maybe it becomes the first Friday of every month and season becomes lobster night. So you can.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but you gotta work with your board of health that way, you know, there's, there's things that you can think about. And also your lobster fishermen have to be willing to, you know, it's not a Friday night, they may want off, maybe it's, you know, there's no day.
That's why I have an existential question here, which is. Solving the downtown is a huge enterprise. And it requires a lot of things happening at once, public improvements, zoning changes, marketing, events. All these things have to happen in a coordinated way. But we don't have the power to make those things happen, we can change the zoning, I guess. And we can encourage other people to do things, but we're gonna need the cooperation of other boards. Like the downtown improvement.
So, but Chris, to your point though, I mean, why couldn't you, thinking about this too, I have to go and says, but you put me through for the last few weeks. Why can't we champion the the i- the idea of all this?
I think we can champion it, we just can't. I think we can champion it. We just can't necessarily deliver us.
Yeah, well, but he can.
But championing makes a difference.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree. We do have to champion. But we can't just announce that this is what's gonna happen.
You're right.
No, you have to get.
We're doing some visioning and planning and trying to build consensus and enlarge, enlarge this, you know.
Yeah.
Circle of stakeholders, cause your capital in terms of some actions. But you don't, you're, it's not, every aspect of downtown is not the domain of the planning board. So it's a multifaceted, you're absolutely right, Chris, Chris. Uh, and, you know, taking from the National Trust for Astoria Preservation, that, you know, they founded the Main Street approach, which is design, organization, promotion, and economic, um, restructuring or, you know, economics, you know, uh, thriving economic district. They kind of changed the words. Uh, so those principles of design, organization, promotion, and, you know, thriving economics. Still, if you think, you've gotta work on all four things. So some of the things you've talked about relate to promotions. Some relate to the design and character, whether that's the infrastructure, whether it's the buildings and the historic district. Some of it relates to the economics. Talked a lot about real estate to the evening. You know, whether it's square footage, whether it's the customer base for the store. So there's aspects of that. But it also requires organization. You know, many, yeah. One of the lessons we can learn from shopping centers is they have centralized retail management. They have one entity who's working on leasing promotion and all, all these things. We, we were, uh, successful downtown with many, many owners. Um, property owners, many, many different business owners. And some may sing the same tune, but there's probably many harmonies and many tunes and some that may not sound too good together. Uh, so we gotta figure out how do we make that chorus more appealing to the ear and more, more voices.
Yeah, can I just say, so when, when Mark first brought this idea of working with, with you on this, one of the questions that came up was, um, we should be aware of what the master plan includes about this topic. And if you go to the master plan, there are two pages that are dedicated specifically to everything we just. And that was eight years ago. So all I'm saying is I just wanna caution us that we don't try and reinvent the wheel here because it's all, it's all right here.
Right. I've read it.
Yeah.
I, 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 I'm aware of it.
But the organization piece is missing.
But it's, but it's referenced in here.
Right, but it's, but I think that there had, that there, the downtown improvement committee has been really working hard on this. And, and, and so I don't wanna just, but, but they've been kind of alone. And so I think.
Yeah.
It needs more and, um, and.
I totally agree. That's exactly what this said.
Yeah, you need, yeah. So, and we had COVID in the middle of that too, don't we? So, um, the four pillars were design, organization, economics, and.
And promotion and promotion.
Marketing. Which happens first.
It goes very broadly. You don't have to gather. They can't be one of them.
It's not, I said, we're gonna swirl those four together. Is it led by design? What does design mean, by the way?
Well, design often re- refers to, um, your building design. Sometimes it's your window display is an a- aspect of design. Uh, you know, building improvements, renovation, maintaining your facade, maintain your building. Is it accessible? Can fall under design? Signage can fall under design. Wayfinding can call under design. You know, some people go towards placemaking and how to connect better with transit zoning. Zoning is a design statement to be in many ways. Uh, so it can be a very, it can be very broad. You may prioritize and focus on certain things, but it can be very broad. Promotion and marketing cannot, you know, there's all different layers, whether it's social media, whether it's, you know, traditional advertising and marketing, whether it's special events. And, you know, there's retail events and special events. There's image development events. There's a lot of different aspects of promotion. You know, in terms of looking at organization, some of it's the, you know, how do you build those partnerships, whether it's with the chamber and regional entities in terms of all the local committees? How do you bring people together, doing some planning and building, you know, some consensus? It may be a management entity. Some downtowns not only have a local downtown improvement committee. Some have what's called a business improvement district. That may not be where you wanna go, business improvement districts. And collect, do a voluntary or mandatory fee amongst all the property owners. Collect that to advance a plan that's supplemental to municipal services. You know, some people do parking benefit districts so that they charge for parking and then use that money to, for downtown improvements. Cause you need to figure out how do you finance things, you know? Sometimes put it out of their, you know, take it out of their general fund, you know?
Yeah.
We can get into a lot of nitty gritty details. We're probably not gonna get to that level. But organization is like, how do you get things done? How do you, you know, who all do you get, have to invite to make sure all of us get, get together? Uh, and, you know, just like the planning board is very important, but you also have a, a staff director of planning. So, you know, managing volunteers and having staff support for vol- you know, volunteer efforts.
I wanted to raise, Kathy, I see your hand up. I'll get to you in a minute. Okay. Um, oh, our select board members is, has her hand up. Um, but I wanted to raise two things that are, one is the planning board. You know, we could see it as an opportunity, but it's also could be a curse. And that is we, um, site plan review or special permits in the downtown. So they give us the opportunity to guide the, um, the design and that kind of thing. At the same time, we are historically have been slow and bureaucratic on sometimes on site plan and special permits. That some, some people would argue that. Um, I know Windover at one point finally said they're not doing, they weren't gonna do any more built projects. So it's something to think about and part of it we control. Um, and we will certainly be inclined to say special permit, um, for some uses perhaps. Um, and, and rightly so, probably. But it's something to be mindful of in terms of being, uh, expeditious, thorough, but respectful of the, the, that time is money for applicants. So that's just something that we should be aware of. And, um, the other thing I'm looking around at the pictures on the wall, um, which all have to be schools. But, um, this town seems to have vocal, uh, opposition to any change. Um, that doesn't mean, I think we've learned, um, in the last year with our zoning efforts, that vocal and votes aren't always the same thing. Um, and, um, so we have to have courage. Um, you know, the, the wall in front of Crosby's was literally going to cause kids, do you remember this? To smoke pot, sit around and smoke pot. And, you know, the tennis courts, we could talk about that for a long time. Um, but, you know, the, the change of that, that it has been, that then is like, kind of becomes part of the fabric of the town. Is we have to, um, I don't know, it seems to be particularly challenging in Manchester.
Can I, can I make say something to just say, I am surprised to hear that from you. You, you the leader of, uh, of, of the, the biggest change this town has ever seen with that whole middle school, high school in the middle.
Yeah, but it took, what did it take?
It was a massive effort.
Gray hair.
But it happened though.
Yeah, I know. But it took, but I think we have to have courage to, to recognize that. I mean, it's just like the MBTI zoning, right? If you listened to the voice.
That was amazing.
It was, turns out it was twenty-three percent of the vote. When the, and same with accessory dwelling units for ten years, we tried to get that passed and it was well, twenty-three percent of the vote, you know, like.
I think informing people is so important, getting to people. It's hard to do, cause.
And I think social media has become maybe even more.
But I think the other thing is that change is happening and we don't manage it. It's things like cargo.
Exactly.
Well, that's exactly.
I think that's what people.
I think that people need to understand that the status quo is not gonna keep the status quo.
That's right.
Right, right. That's exactly it. And I think that's becoming obvious to a lot of people with the changes that have happened in the D one and D two districts.
We, um, we don't have many people online, but I'd like to just hear from, um, Kathy Balata, who's a select board member and has had her hand raised for a while. Kathy, go ahead.
Hi, um, sorry, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Yeah, I just wanted to mention a couple of things, cause you guys raised some really good questions. Um, number one, I just got my quarterly, uh, notice about the upcoming, uh, uh, Chamber of Commerce meeting. It's being scheduled. So I wasn't sure if you guys were aware, we, uh, the select board, town administrator, chiefs of fire and police, and, uh, the chair of the downtown improvement committee all meet with, uh, members of the Chamber of Commerce every quarter. And I just noticed that I don't see representation from the planning board or, or Mark specifically on that invitation. So I think that's one, um, way for the planning board and or Mark to engage in conversations about some of the short term things you were talking about. So, um, I'll, I'll connect you and, and make sure that that happens. But it's a really great forum. We meet with business owners and representatives from the chamber and talk about events and marketing. And what do the business owners need? So just wanna make sure.
I just thought to ask is, would it make sense to have Kathy come and do an interview there or before or after? We can maybe think about that.
Yeah.
You probably have other agenda items.
Yeah, then, um, it's, so it's run by the chamber. Um, so, and not all businesses are there, but it's a great connection point for the town officials and town staff to meet with business owners. But it's not everybody. So I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of it. Um, because I do think that's a gap if, if no one representing the planning, um, board or town planner is attending. Um, secondly, we talked about here, I heard you talk about a lot of, um, what I'll call governance issues. Who's, who, who's doing what? And it was something I was actually gonna bring up at Monday's, uh, select board meeting, our next meeting. I think it's worthwhile for the planning board and select board to kind of figure out that who's taking the lead on what. Cause you're right, downtown improvement has been doing a lot, but it's a little bit different than perhaps what their original charter was. So we need to kind of just take a peek at that and make sure collectively, we wanna keep it the same or maybe, maybe not. So I just, I do think there's a governance issue worth discussing. And then lastly, um, a big fan of taking a look at the, uh, master plan. Um, as you said, a lot of, some of these items are already covered in there. And also, there's also a subsequent downtown improvement two dot O presentation that was given to both the, uh, select board and planning board at least a year or two ago. And that also has some nuggets about the, uh, you know, the beautification of the downtown. And some of those items were put on hold because of the culvert project. Um, we, we didn't wanna spend money on things that potentially could get ripped up. So I do think there are some other artifacts that we want to take a peek at, um, so we don't reinvent the wheel. Just, just those three things. Thank you.
Kathy, can I speak about that streetscape, the two point O part? So I was, I was intimately involved with that whole thing and, and indeed the culvert project. Kind of everything in dollars and money and where is financing coming and all the practical stuff in here. But, uh, and I do agree that the, uh, the whole mission of the downtown improvement has evolved into a different direction from what it was three years ago when I first joined it. It was, it was all about beautification and curb line and speedlights and stuff. Now, that's not even brought up. Now it's all about revitalizing the downtowns. What, what is the way to do it? Fits in hand and glove to what we're talking about here.
Right. And I think they, they, you know, because the beautification was kind of slow, slowed down a bit because of the culvert project. They, uh, had brought in members of the business community to just say, you know, how else can we be helpful? So I think they, you know, they have redirected themselves a little bit, um, you know, uh, with good intentions and done a lot of great work, especially in the past couple of months. Um, but I, I do think it's appropriate for the select board and the planning board to kind of just take a look at what's going on and make sure we're clear on who's taking the lead on what. Otherwise, there's duplication of effort and that's, that, that usually doesn't wind up leading to good things.
And we're not quite sure what we're doing yet. So, but that's a really good, couple of really good points. Thank you. Let me see about a couple of other people or anybody else, um, Adam or Jane wanna say anything? Okay. So.
Can we talk a little bit about June ninth and switch gears?
Sure.
So, um, I believe Sarah and Mark, um, shared with you my draft working agenda for the, on June ninth community workshop. And one of the things I wanted, um, I, I did bring some extra copies if, um, if we need it. Um.
Is that your proposal?
No, it's, I, I was supposed to put it in the back. There are two lines, sorry.
So I, I think that, um, without getting in, walking through everything, or maybe we can, uh.
Can we actually start with, uh, should, does June ninth feel too soon and, um, or, uh, I'll put it up on the screen and, um, so that's, that's one question. Maybe that.
Can I answer it?
Yeah.
In my experience, it is a bit too soon. If you don't, we don't have something that we're, uh, if we're just out there throwing it out and casting a net and hoping to reap in something, that's one thing. But if you're expecting to have a, a real solid conversation, I think this might be, might be chancy to do it this way. It's one man's opinion.
You know, uh, we can't allow perfection to slow it, you know? Perfection is the enemy of completion and moving forward often. And, and I tend to have those perfectionist tendencies anyway. So I, I certainly like to have, get more done than we sometimes do. But I think bringing people together to have a conversation, we're having smaller group con- smaller conversations like we did just now. We did that with the downtown improvement committee in the historic district and we're hoping to do it with a couple others before the ninth. Uh, and those conversations can continue. But trying to get a kind of vision statement in a rough draft, we can always fine tune it in the future, but let's kind of start, get that first cut and get that first cut at those early action items. I think we, we can do it because every group I've talked to so far has, has already started on those early action items. And you've got many of the ingredients. And I think Peter's right and Kathy's right. A lot of that is in the master plan, so we can, you know, revisit it. Uh, and I think some of, um, so really having the workshop, I see as having a mix of some small group discussions. Because sometimes it's a, a group this size where it's easier to have a discussion than having a discussion with fifty people at one time. So I tend to use a mix of small groups and as well as some at large discussion. So one of the things on the agenda you'll notice is that we divide up into small groups a couple of different times. And that's, um, so I wanted to, and, uh, when I talked to Mark and Sarah about it, we thought each of you could take, sit at a different table. So we're gonna let people self-select, encourage people to sit in a place where maybe they don't know someone. Uh, so they meet their neighbors and we, we welcome people. But if we can have each member of the planning board sit at a different table, cause what I like to do is, uh, and I tend to have handouts for every table on every person. Uh, so that someone can be the, what I call the recorder and. And then, and take the big ideas and the consensus ideas and put it on flip chart paper. And that could be, and someone also be the um reporter, so talking out, so it doesn't have to be the same person. Uh, but having a resource person like a Planning Board member. You don't have to be the recorder and you don't have to be the reporter, but you need to make sure. There's someone at your table who does each of those functions and it may be you, but you know. You figure it out amongst yourselves. Um, and I think that helps move things along, um, and it, the goal is nothing, not necessarily to report. That there's six or seven different ideas at your table, it's what, as a group, where your consensus points are. Um, so, you know, people might say, oh, that's a really intriguing idea and only maybe one person mentioned it. But if people are comfortable as a group saying, we should talk more about that, bring it up as a group. But we don't need the recitation of the seven different ideas, we need the kind of, the summary, the common threads. Uh, and that would be your role as kind of the resource person for each table. So you're taking a leadership role and convening role for each table.
So I have some logistical questions. Actually, I think it's really good to do it right up front, start off with this. Because it is going to shape the rest of the discussion going forward. But I think we have to be careful not to assume that the people who attend this first thing are gonna have the right answer, it may, it's gonna evolve over time.
There's no wrong answers, they're all, you know, and some answers may be embraced by more people than others.
Sure.
But so, are we, where is this going to happen?
I was just gonna ask Mark if he had checked with them, did you check with the high school cafeteria?
I haven't booked anything because I wanted to make sure, no.
And does this rule out Zoom participation?
We're gonna do all face to face, it is really difficult to, to do effective hybrid. Because we're wanting conversation to get to their consensus. There is times and places where later on in our planning process, um, I'm certainly very comfortable and have done hybrid workshops before. Uh, but I think for this, we're, we were talking about the school. Uh, and we are on a very short timeline, so it is much more preparation to do a hybrid meetings than our weeks.
So I was gonna um say why we're on a short timeframe, just to give you, to the, everybody, so. This is this fiscal year's money, and so we want to try to use Kathy's time and. The other thing is, um, graduation is uh that Friday, so then people do start to disappear for the summer. And so as we want to try to do some work over the summer, having this input. Um, I think makes sense and um we certainly can repeat these forums, you know, several times and not get other opportunities.
I also think we have the energy coming from people's reaction to what happens to.
Right, and the other thing is that um, you haven't yet seen our timeline, but to get a, a zoning change to town meeting. If we have a town meeting in November, means it needs to be done. October first and even before that, which means a draft, you know, September fifteenth. So that we start socializing it and um have, just the hearings you need to have and the all of those, those, the postings and all of that.
So, so one of the things from my experience with MBTA zoning, we get thirty people to this, we'll be doing pretty well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that means there'll be like three or four people per group, which is kind of small.
Great discussion, maybe.
I don't know.
Well, I think we're gonna encourage the Downtown Improvement and the Historic, the, the other, other committees.
Well, we're encouraging people in lovely June night to come to.
Yeah.
So can I, so if we do this June ninth, when does the first post or communication go out about?
That's where we gotta.
That's what we're doing right now.
Mark is gonna get the nail down.
Sarah said, you guys are gonna take care of the logistics and outreach, so.
Yeah, Tiffany will, you know, as soon as we, as soon as we have the room, Tiffany will basically handle the, it will go into Greg's, um. Uh, thing next week and, you know, people plan a week and a half.
Does every group have the same topics to discuss?
But it looks like.
That's how you get a consensus.
I just wonder if it makes sense to have just.
I, I like to have the mix of opinions because the Planning Board talks to the Planning Board a lot, the Downtown Improvement. Committee always talks to themselves, the Historic District, and we need to kind of do a little cross fertilization. Um, because I'm not worried, you, you'll all go back to your uh corners or regular meeting schedules afterward, so you'll, you'll chat. But we need to get that cross fertilization.
So, so this meeting is hosted by the Planning Board?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so will the Downtown Improvement Committee have?
Yeah.
Will they attend, they'll come? Okay, well, I would think.
I hope they do.
Yeah, because for.
They're very vocal, yeah.
Have you, have you met him, you've met all of them yet, Kathy?
No, we're, I, I did mention it at both committee meetings that was going to be likely and, and it's hosted by the Planning Board, but. I was going to their meetings before the planning, so there's a little sequencing challenge here.
To talk to, I can talk to the head of the.
Well, let's get, we have to schedule room tomorrow morning. So if we have to push it a week. Check with your schedule then. Okay, so I think logistics, I'm not worried about the logistics, I think the cafeteria at the high school works well except for the. Um, I said, I warned her that the chairs are hard to sit in for a long time, so make people get up and do a stretch or something, so.
So I'm a little confused about the mix of the audience. So is, the, are the participants, is the way you're thinking about it? To be kind of getting the relevant actors in government together, or is it getting a lot of?
I am open to both, it's really, the Planning Board is hosting it, so, and you all, um. I'd like to know what your participation goal is, so that I know how many handouts to have and. And, and you know, how many tables I might likely need to prepare for, but I can do as many as you want.
I think the thought was that it would be, um, there's a lot of overlap among the, the committees. And the people who come to all of these forums. Um, so that's one thing, and I think we would want to encourage interested citizens to come.
Recruit a lot.
Talk about you, you're a business owner, yes, so we may need another week or so.
When we, when we did the MBTA forums and.
Yeah, we got a.
The harbor management one, we got what, about, about all the same number, what, forty, fifty?
Forty, yeah.
Somewhere like this, not more.
But it was more, it wasn't designed so much for other government entities as it was for the public, if I'm remembering right about the forums.
I think it's an opportunity to say, we're thinking about this issue, we want your input early on, um, and. Um, yeah, yeah, we'll probably hear all of these same thing we've talked about, but hopefully we'll also hear. Um, interesting solutions and find the, the couple of people who want to help. You know, window box, whatever.
As Chris said earlier, downtown's very complex, there's, there's a lot of different pieces. And many parts deals with land use and zoning, but you need, you know, marketing and you need, you know, business and you need real estate. So, you know, the bigger mix you have, think of this as a way of setting the table to begin the discussion.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and this is really kind of your first discussion event. Um, because, and that's what we're kind of doing in this fiscal year, you may want to then continue doing some more. Planning and getting in, going more in depth, but we're, we're starting on, you know, kind of the broad.
Understand.
Everyone together, and we're still in the broad brush stage, um, and when it's a beginning.
Mm-hmm. One thing that we haven't talked about tonight, I don't know if we want to spend any time on it tonight, but we haven't really talked about where is downtown? Um, and. Um, and I think somebody said, should we focus, whatever this effort is, more tightly on a. You know, where do we start, where would, and I know that was always a downtown improvement, a lot of downtown improvement, maybe five years ago. That was an issue too, um, just because that was the beautification phase of downtown improvement, so. You know, how do we, um. Where, where is the action and we may not need to.
Well, I, I think, I want to kind of yield to Mark for a little bit because he put together some maps on different perspectives of downtown, so.
So in your packet, I put map of the entire downtown general district, so that you could look at that. Um, that's okay. But the, the other thing I did is I put together a map that included the entire general district. I'm gonna pass this around, but it has no lines on it. And so what I thought would be a good exercise was for everyone to draw. Um, on the map, area that they perceive as the downtown. Of Manchester, not what the zoning shows, but what you perceive to downtown, and if we were gonna work on. The distinct area or uh, so maybe a streetscape project or um. Other unique changes, what? What's the view, how would you draw that?
And then I actually do have up on the, the general district, which I think is interesting, include a lot of land behind, so.
Right, but first, look here, look at your map and draw the area.
Karen.
So you're collecting data from us.
Circle around the outside of it.
Draw around the property lines where if you were all of a sudden zoning czar for the downtown.
Zoning czar.
How would you draw like the, the downtown zone?
So let's, I ha- have to be particular here, are we talking about the, the mercantile downtown? Or are we talking about? I would include residential in that too.
But I think that's, however you want to perceive it, I don't, I, I would, because. Well, I, I, I mean more of your downtown business area.
Downtown.
Like if you were gonna create a specific, like you can, I don't want you to include residential if you don't want to. Somehow in the future have it be part of a commercial downtown district. I mean, because that's what we're really leaning towards is how do we define the downtown area? Because you do have such a large and vast general district. So some of those are quote downtown residential style areas, but I don't think you want them. I mean, a large portion of your residential area around the downtown like that, no matter which, how they're zoned, so.
When people are comfortable, it would be great if you put your name in the corner and then, Mark, maybe we can. Click them and then scan them so all of you can see the different definitions.
Always revealing. Let's see here, oh my goodness.
Well, nice, we shall, we should all come up with the same plan, by the way.
I mean, if anybody comes up with the same general thing, aside from maybe a few properties here or there, that's, that's a good thing. That's really showing that there's kind of a general understanding of. What we, you, you perceive as the downtown and um, that's. Um, and if you guys are all over the place, then. You've got a lot of work to do, because that probably is an indication of the general unity is also as. As, as many diverse opinions on what downtown is, uh, as, as this. Six, six of you, so. That's right, yes.
I mean, you almost have to go parcel by parcel, like, is that?
You know?
Well, no, I'm, I'm looking up one parcel that I'm curious about.
What are you doing?
I was just looking up particular parcels.
If someone wants to read these, there's.
Yeah, I think you wanted our names.
Just so we can, one, two, three.
All right.
Boy.
Did everybody put their names on it, I want to make sure. See if he was mine, that's.
Oh, boy. Well, either Mark or I will stand up and we'll share it with all of you, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you doing one too, Mark?
Um.
You need to draw one too.
I need to draw one?
Yes, you do.
I, I'll do one pretty quick, yeah, great.
Um, you know what's interesting?
Actually, I already.
Lived in the town for a very long time, remember there being little commercial enterprises scattered throughout the residential. Little tiny shops.
I mean, and then, that's kind of like, there were nodes before there, you know, with a little commercial, a corner store or something.
Yes.
Because people didn't have cars, or there was only one car per household.
Yep.
So, you know, if you ran out of milk, someone had to be able to walk to the corner store because the person with the car was. At work and wouldn't be home for another six, seven hours.
Mm-hmm.
All right, well, thank you very much for, um, I think, uh, enlightening discussion. Been nice to have a discussion, so.
I can have one more question, is what you did with us today is similar to what we'll do on June ninth?
We'll be much more structured on June ninth.
Yeah, yeah.
Same question, though, thoughtful responses.
Right.
Engaging.
The idea, and you've got a hint of what, where I'm going with this.
Yeah, I'm gonna.
Uh, this is my, what I would call an internal working agenda, we will have a handout agenda as well. Um. What, what the idea is to have a, Gordon, is to have a thoughtful discussion.
Yeah.
Because I really think how you reach understanding is through conversation and listening. And, you know, finding where you may disagree or have differences and, but also finding out where there's common bonds and common threats.
Yep.
And, and quite frankly, we need more of that in our civic life.
Yeah.
That's right there, sure.
Yes, okay, great, well, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you for all your time as well, I appreciate it, and for your colleagues in, uh, in, of the, in the public as well.
Yeah, great, um, we do have some other business, so you're welcome to stay, but.
I may leave, but I have, I, I have a bit of a drive. I thought about taking the train, which would have been much more comfortable, but I didn't know how late we were gonna go.
And also, unfortunately, it does not run only once an hour or so, so.
Where's, where's home?
At nine o'clock.
At nine o'clock, yeah.
But it's a decent, again, I didn't know how late we were going.
Yeah, good, well, thank you so much.
We actually didn't talk about the train as a focal point of the downtown.
Yeah.
So, um, thank you and we will be in touch about confirming the.
You want a new one?
I know, I see yours.
Okay.
He just traced yours.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, great, uh, good discussion, everybody. Thank you very much, um, we don't always have quite so much fun. But we will. If we wanna. I, I'm unclear on whether we decide June nine, we're gonna go for it, we're gonna, we have to check the space. To be determined, um, Mark, you wanna talk about the one stop grant and?
So the one stop grant, um. We're putting together, I have drafted it, was gonna send it out, but I didn't quite get a chance to finish. Edit to it, go on it to do a first edit, so I will probably send it out tomorrow afternoon. So that people can read and send back any comments, but basically. It is, um, a more detailed look at what we've been talking about. You know, how do we implement, you know, with this, the end of this project will give us kind of a big outline of. Tasks, right, things that we can do once we find that, figure out what everybody's vision is, not just. Six of you, but the other boards, committees, Kathy compiles a report and puts together kind of a. The list of what she's heard that people would like, how to, how to implement some of these things. Um, but this takes it to the next level where we, we bring in consultants, uh, to. Really look at if, if it's the way I think it's gonna head toward where we wanna more attractive downtown. We wanna incorporate more visitors. To extend, uh, our business community and seasons and other things and support. Multiple businesses, uh, we need to change the zoning to allow that, not just, uh. So that's a little bit more of a, of a project to, to do so. And so we'd be to bring in a consultant to do that, also to, to put together. The kind of a updated streetscape plan for the downtown. Which incorporates some of what's in part phase one that was built. Almost twenty years ago and some elements are really quite good. And how do we carry some of those elements through into phase two and what would we change, um, in both areas, so. So we would hire an engineering firm and landscape.
Literally V H P was the engineering firm that did everything you just said, streetscape, roadway, curb lot. Thing, bump balls, blah, blah, blah.
That's, that's a twenty year old plan.
No, no, it's, it's a year or two old. Year or two old. I, it was, that's why I joined the downtown improvement is to manage that process. Do I think it needs to be relooked at? I do, but, but understand that a lot of energy's already gone into it.
Yeah, no, I understand, uh, but I think, uh. I think, yeah, I think, um, cause I did look at that little phase two set of drawings.
There were, there were sketches, there were.
Yeah, yeah, that's. Exactly, exactly, that's what I, that's the only, that's what I've seen. So, so my, my, but my point is, is that that needs to be done in a much more involved in. Manner to bring it to twenty five percent design drawings. Once you get it to twenty five percent design drawings, then you can apply for ASWORX funding to help pay for this. You don't bring it to that level, you're not gonna get. It'll be less likely that you're gonna get that funding, also that helps bring the details of the plan. Everything from where there might be curb changes, parking changes, the picking lights and lamps. And all those types of things get looked at in that high level of detail that you really want them to do. Yeah, and I did not see that.
It wasn't, it was, it was very, cause that's, that's the world I lived in for forty years. And so when I saw the drawings that were being prepared, it was a little, little scary, so. They were led by the public works department, by the way, we didn't, we didn't manage it, it was all public works.
So this would be, uh, you know, a, a much more involved project. And so it would be done in coordination, uh, with the zoning and the whole look at the downtown, so.
Um, Sammy?
Yes, I have a newbie question here, so there's, here's, um, the downtown, there's the master plan, which is about ten years old. I'm trying to understand what the documents are, people are going to, so there's the master plan, which is about ten years old, which Susan. And then there is a dip two point O.
Downtown Improvement Project is the one that was done down, downtown, you saw it, it's got the granite curves and. Granite blockways on a portion of the downtown area. Two point O is extending it all the way through the, everything that showed up in Mark's drawing.
Okay, wait a minute, so, so there is a plan that existed a couple of years ago that you were involved in managing. And then that has been updated subsequently. Oh, okay, so there's two things.
Phase one has done a long time.
Mark's thinking that phase one needs to be.
Refreshed.
Oh, I agree. So that's exactly this, that's exactly the thought process we had when we did phase two, some things worked, some things didn't.
Is it, are, uh, uh, the master plan I have, the downtown improvement, I do not, is that available online?
Downtown improvement plan?
I believe I might have.
I can show it to you, I can bring it in.
That it would be great to have a copy.
The, the H B, the engineers, uh, and, uh, they're, they were good. But they were led by public works department, so it had a def- very definitely an engine bent to it, as much as I kept saying, you know, this is. Not enough, this is a straight line where in fact, straight lines don't work, I need this, we need to think about design.
So it's designed on a desktop rather than. Was it a desktop design kind of?
It was, it was loose, they, they put the standard sections of roadways and curb line sections and bump outs and stuff, but it wasn't. Not on a level of detail, we were nowhere near going out to anybody for any price for approvals, cause this wasn't there. It was a good picture.
Where does it exist?
Um, I'm looking, I might have a P D.
I can get it from downtown.
So I think that one of the, this is sort of the longer term vision for the part of the planning piece. Mark, I am gonna push a little bit on, uh, it being the precursor to the zoning. Cause I feel, we, and we can talk about whether others agree, but I feel like we could do some. I'm really interested to see what Kathy recommends for some of the nearer term, um, kinds of things, even, uh. I'm pretty open to, to doing our zoning stuff in two phases or three phases, we have to, as we understand that issues, but. Nonetheless, I think, um, the idea is that the state would fund this. Is it a hundred percent funding or is it a one, a, uh, match?
Well, they, they would like probably to see about a ten percent contribution.
So how much is the?
So it would probably be about a hundred and fifty thousand.
So we would need to spend, so our planning board budget is twenty five thousand a year. So that would, um, take up fifteen thousand of our planning board budget to get a hundred and fifty thousand of. Of planning work done. So, um.
Can I ask you a question, Mark? A hundred and fifty thousand buys you what?
With the work of planning of the team.
Consultant team.
Of the consultant team, which would probably include the engineer and the landscape architect. And the planner, we would produce those, um. Drawings for the streetscape, produce the zoning changes, actually produce documents. That we can then take the next step, whether it's the general meeting or for additional.
These aren't building, they're, they're not buildable documents, are they? No, you can't. That's, that's fairly.
Twenty five percent's a pretty substantial.
It lives in a different world than I did. Twenty five percent is a schematic design.
So Marx, sorry. The, the fifteen thousand of planning board money, um, gets us to a point where we can apply for the rest of the grant? And, I mean, everything I'm reading is that these grants are becoming harder and harder to get based on. What's going on in the world and what happened with, uh, Tuck's point with the rotunda too, I just wanna be careful that that doesn't happen again, right?
So, I mean, if we don't receive the grants. Still have our full twenty five thousand, so that if we want to pursue, um. You know, spring in just planning consultants like we had today to refine some, some additional zoning proposals. Bring in landscape architect to work on, I don't know, some improvements to something or. You know, we can discuss what that would be, again. You know, we would kinda have more of a list of things to, to look at and prioritize at the end of this. Sessions, these sessions with Kathy, so, um.
So, so Mark, um, I, is there any economic development portion of this that can tell us that? These, these kinds of storefronts are feasible and these high end restaurants aren't or?
Well, this isn't necessarily like a business development type.
Well, they're probably, which aren't gonna do squat for us if we don't have. Economic development.
I'm looking at the website, it's the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative Technical Grant Asses- Technical Assistance Program. Is the Single Application Portal and Collective Review Process of Community and Economic Development Grant Programs. Make targeted investments based on development continuum. So it says it's about downtown developments. What is the deadline?
June fourth, yes.
And that's all stuff that you will?
Yes, I'm working with, uh, Sue Croft, our grants.
And when will you know if the funds are, will be funded?
Generally, it's October. End of October is when we do the grant announcements. So, then you. Well, they have a lot of applications for, for money than they actually have. The town has, does not have any other applications being submitted at this time, so it's a good year to submit something.
Are there, um. Uh, deliverable requirements or, you know, do we have to pledge to do any particular, I mean, besides a, a match of funds?
No. I mean, we're, we're representing that we're gonna get product at the end of this project, which is the drawings. Forward with and. And zoning that we can bring to town meeting.
Does it help that we were in N B T A zoning community?
Well, it means that we're still eligible to apply. If we hadn't.
Basics.
If we hadn't been done that, we could be.
Okay, I was hoping for a gold star.
So we haven't seen your draft yet, um, and you. It's your recommendation that we obviously that we apply for this and that we use, um, our budget for the match. And you've, have you been in touch with downtown improvement to, I just don't want to them to feel that this is.
Oh, I, I, I regularly go to their meetings. At the meetings as well, um.
Okay, um, so I guess I'll say is, um, our budget is twenty five thousand a year, we also, we have generally not used it. I, one of my items for this year is to be sure and use our money, and this would actually be F Y twenty six money, right?
Yes.
So, uh, F Y twenty seven.
So we're using up almost all of the funds that we had left over, we did use some of the funds. For one of the N B T A studies, uh, and so we balance, most of the balance will be used for Kathy. So.
But, um, the one stop grant starts in when? January?
Yes, you would prob- we would probably have the contract signed in December, so generally you start. In January, so.
I'm just trying to figure out if we, um, so we, it would be out of our twenty five thousand, would leave us only ten to do. Any other things that we needed to do this year?
Like that, that, that are gonna cost money.
Like more Kathy's time or potentially there's. So, um. We don't meet before June fourth, so maybe we, uh, have a motion to. To support the, um, submission of the one stop grant for the downtown improvement, but ask that. Maybe Gordon and I, Gordon is member of the downtown improvement committee and I review the grant. To before and, and. Yeah, and that the understanding is that we would spend up to fifteen thousand dollars as a match. For the, as a ten percent of the, um, application. Does that make sense? Okay, second.
And I'll, I'll second it, um, so the question is then, the only way that money would be spent is if we get the grant.
Yeah, right, so we would know.
Didn't get the grant, then we could discuss.
Right, so, yeah, that's an option, that's nice to know, so we have some flexibility.
Yeah, okay, great, um, any other discussion? Um, all in favor? Great, thank you, um, great, so you'll get that to us and we'll, we'll, we'll sit down, just go over it, great, um, okay, um. So in your, uh, so you guys are gonna get, um, town emails, we're gonna do like, uh, between now and soon. Do kind of a primer, um, anybody else wants to come to talk about the, um, how we use the, um. Uh, one, uh, Outlook and SharePoint, so, um, a couple of things to remind everybody, everything we do is public. And, um, we have to be careful about, uh, group editing of documents because that's deliberation. So while it's tempting to do comments on documents, we have to be careful about.
So if I send out a document to everybody, you can reply back to me, but you can't reply.
Reply to, uh, reply all or show comments. That, you know, if I comment on your comment, then that's deliberation, uh, which is really. That, you know, if I comment on your comment, then that's deliberation, uh which is really.
You reply back to me and what I generally do is I will. You know um. Go through like a document in the comments that makes sense to include. Sometimes. People make several different points, but if I write some new section or paragraph that addresses. Several points or adjust the language like we did with the you were on the MBTA test course uh like I did with that, so. Um, not every single comment will be in there, and of course, then we'll be discussing it, so you can bring up why it wasn't. This was my comment at the meeting, or you'll see that it was addressed in a different way, so.
Okay, yeah, and if you have questions, um. Don't hesitate to ask, um. Right, I am trying in my single screen here to share something. So the next um item. Is uh we so in your. Packet, you got it by email, but you may not have gotten it. Was a list of um. Here we go.
Sarah, I have one quick procedural question.
Yeah.
And that is, is there a packet that we should come?
It's on one, it's all um you'll see it, it's on a SharePoint drive, and so you, we we. Tend to do most everything in electronic. Versions with the exception of plans. It's nice when we have division. So uh reviewing plans to have a physical copy.
Yep.
And those get put downstairs across from the town clerks. There's some mailboxes. Yeah, so. Yeah. Yeah, that's fine.
Great, thank you.
Ask any questions like that anytime. Procedural questions, you can always. So um or call. So in the packet, we're um. Chris had started the ball rolling on the list of things that um. We might um. Do this year um. We uh and we don't need to go over this right now. What I might do is just. Give us a one sentence uh on on each of these. I think we've talked a lot about the downtown visioning um tonight. Housing production plan is a requirement of a state, and that's gonna require.
And if they go funds, right?
A requirement for.
For the housing production plan, don't we have?
It's paid for.
Have to pay, so C B C's paying.
Yes, paid for by C B C funds.
Okay, so that is um.
I have I have one photo I need to get because of the cost, I need to get two more quotes, so.
Okay.
Before someone is selected, but that's a process that goes through the planning board. Um, it needs to be adopted. The plan needs to be updated with twenty twenty census, which is why it's a little more extensive update than the previous update. And then it needs to get adopted, reviewed and adopted by the planning board, then by the select board before it gets submitted to to the state for review and comment.
But in terms of our timing, our time, it doesn't take huge amounts of our.
Doesn't take huge amounts, but when we get to the point of actually. Reviewing is a some some.
Yeah.
And and the consultant will probably want to come in and like and.
Yeah.
Take an hour of a meeting here and there as as they work through it, so.
So other projects that we've talked about over the last couple of years and have done some work on uh demolition delay, which really sits with historic commission, but can. Work with them on that. Senior housing, we actually have drafted several senior housing bylaws. We could dust off and and uh move forward. Uh we talked about downtown rezoning um. If you look up on the screen, if you can't, if you don't have it in front of you, um. The revision of forms and fees and revision of rules and regulations. Um, I think a lot of that can be done by Mark um. We had an interim planner who started that, but it still needs to be done. Driveway regulations um have a long history and remain problematic. We need to tidy those up. Drainage review for um lots, uh how how we deal with stormwater coming off of um. Lots and then um ongoing zoning bylaw edits in general. You know, with your typos or small things that we can probably advance some of those um cluster zoning is a, we actually have a bylaw written. That we could take another look at if we wanted to. We have a cluster by law. Cluster by law is a the um group housing together and keep open space um in Manchester that requires five acres.
My acres, and there are any five acre parcels to do it on.
Right, so it's sort of a moot point, so we actually had revised that and. For a bunch of reasons, get it get it over the finish line. Um, there are two there are two districts around the heater, um Pine Street, Pleasant Street, School Street. Um, D one and D two, they have different requirements. There's the MBTA zoning. Process identified some flaws in the way they were written and described and got translated from an old version of the zoning into the new zoning. So probably a pretty simple fix um. But uh um and then um I added a few other things that have come up, uh clear cutting of lots. I know Peter has talked about, um I think, commercial conversions to residential and site plan review for that. We need to appoint associate members. And I'd like to have.
Yeah, sorry, can I ask something about the associate manager? I know you talked about that at the last meeting, so um you had asked us to think about.
Yeah.
Candidates. Is there is there like a um a list of criteria? Or is it the same as the planning board pretty much? Okay, so we're just looking for someone that's.
And we have actually three people who have expressed interest. We need to, so.
Yeah.
It's a um. So. We have to just do that.
There'll be a formal request.
Yeah, yeah.
And then and then remind me, they will come to every meeting or at their choice or?
You can sort of pick and choose which ones.
So they gotta be on a stamp or call.
A site plan review.
We have applications that could be consistently at meetings, because that's the whole purpose.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, yeah, special permits.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I wanna talk about communications policy and practice. And we, I would like to so suggest that we do some training. And budget um and consultant use, so um. Those are among the things that we um. And then the things that we already completed, lots of zoning changes.
Sorry, Sarah, one important, and this isn't big flippant, but do we have a communication process?
We don't.
Okay, that's okay. No, I just wanted, yeah, thanks.
For my reasons, but.
I I wasn't being.
I think the time is coming. I think it's not that hard.
Just volunteer.
So um. And then it's really important to say, you know, we in the last year, we did MBTA zone, last two years, three years, we did a whole slew of zoning updates, MBTA zoning. Accessory dwelling units, floodplain, site plan review, associate members, so we've we've made a lot of progress um so. But a lot still to do.
Yeah, halfway through.
So I learned a fun fact.
Oh, yeah.
At the master plan, yes, that, do you know when the zoning bylaws were originally drafted?
Nineteen forty eight.
And do you know when they were first updated?
In nineteen eighty.
Seventy eight, and according to the master plan, which is two thousand seventeen, between nineteen seventy eight and two thousand seventeen, there have been eighty, approximately eighty changes.
I think we've done eighty.
It's all seems to be, yeah.
And they're all needed too.
Yeah, yes, there's, it's like a wildebeest. So so many of our zoning bylaws are put were entered into the zoning by citizens petitions. Which is partly why sometimes they have illegal stuff and um there are a lot of citizens petition things, so. But.
Sarah, did I add one more thing? This is what I was thinking about. I know we've talked about a lot. Who actually enforces decision we make?
Yes, enforcement.
Yes, please.
Yes, that that becomes, and and I thought about two examples. Two oh eight Summer Street here, that rock pile, how that ever gonna turn into what he expects it to turn, and also cell signaling, actually maybe arranging a. Site visit with them just to go see what, see what it looks like.
I drove by cell signal today as wondering that. And um.
You drove up into the.
No, I drove, I think I drove as far as I could without. Requesting permission, but um I want, so one of the things for you is have you been up there?
Not recently.
Have you checked to see if they have their website up and with a contact person? That's required by the special permit. And then I'm uh. Wanting to make sure we have the money. On one point three million dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's um.
That sounds good.
That sounds good.
So part of the communication process should be exactly this, right, is how you follow up on these decisions.
That's, yeah, that's a different communication. I think that's enforcement and follow up are.
Yeah.
Two things, so another follow up item is at the compost site, the site plan. Conditions that we impose have not been done. We asked for some uh vegetative. Order along the edge. I think it may be unusable, given the compaction there and other things, but. That can't be just ignored. Even by the town, so those kinds of things we should. There's there um on communication, I'm thinking of how do we respond to face foot? To the public's interest in particular projects like cargo or the pine street, and I have some ideas about that. So there was a discussion about um we can parse. The I think you had asked, and we've talked at length before about trying to set priorities. You can't, there's no way we're gonna get all this done this year. Um, and who's gonna do, how how they're gonna get done? You know, we're gonna have Mark do some of them, we're gonna collectively do some of it. Um, and some of it doesn't need a lot of deliberations, which is kind of common sense, I think. So so do we wanna have a retreat? Oh, yeah, do we? I'll add my list and the things we just talked about to the project list. And we had talked about having a retreat. Sue and I are both opposed to Saturday or Sunday, but we're. What I thought I would do is send out a um like a doodle poll to say when it's good um for a weeknight where we. Really kind of talk through not the details of these things, but which of these things we think are most important. How we're gonna get them done and kind of lay them out on a calendar. I do a meeting calendar. You know, where can I talk about it? And it's like what we're gonna do at each meeting, so we can kind of try to accomplish things um. And, you know, the the deadlines um that come up, we can anticipate that. You and your comrades are gonna have a site plan review up there on Pine Street. In our first multi fund housing.
Me and my comrades.
Yes. Designer you team.
Oh, oh. Oh, the uh.
So we have to think a little bit about where we're going to do that.
To deal with Gary, yeah. Is Gary on that committee?
Yes. Gary and Chuck West.
That's good, yeah, I like I like talking.
So um, you know, things like that, so you're, you know, we we kind of need to lay those things out and.
So does the retreat, is that have to be in public too?
But I think we would.
So everybody can come on the retreat.
Yeah, I think we would do it, um it would be posted, we would do it. In a different place and we would not have some.
Yeah.
It's the way we've done in the past, and yes, if somebody wants to come and sit at Tuck's point or someplace.
When will this happen? Sooner the better.
Yeah, sooner the better. Um, I'm gonna, I think I'll rather than trying to look at calendars right now, I'll do a um. A. Doodle poll to uh find out when people are available, if that makes sense.
I'd also like to invite the new town administrator to come.
Yeah, we'll certainly meet with us, whether we invite him to the retreat or not, I don't know. Need to work about worry too much about D one, D two right off of that. So maybe um. I don't expect you to know what all that those things mean. Don't worry. It's okay, um and um.
Right, it is okay. I will agree with that. Don't worry, Bart, I'm not sharing. I have the meeting packets, so.
But um, yeah. So I think we'll um. Pause on that, if that's okay, we'll let so that will be the next step on that. Um, there was a little bit of correspondence and public hearings, but um. But now what I need is a motion to enter executive session. Provide pursuant to General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty one A one. Regarding an open meeting law complaint from Shannon Slaughter Esquire on behalf of Timothy McDonald and Elizabeth Kinder. Dating dated May fifth, two thousand twenty five. To acknowledge the receipt, review the complaint and consider the response. Um, and executive session uh pursuant to the same general law to discuss strategy with respect to pending litigation. Because uh the chair has declared that an open meeting may be detrimental to the litigation portion. Um, of the of the planning board, McDonald and Kinder versus Planning Board Land Court Docket number twenty five. Sleneus zero 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 two seven zero, and we will return to open session. I'll take a motion to that effect, please. Second.
Second.
Um, I need to take a roll call vote, I believe, for executive session, so Sandy Byer Turner, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Worten.
Yes.
Gordon, Sarah votes, yes, Chris only. Brian, Brian. And I need to share this.
Let me resume doing this. Hold on, and and the broadcast, is there a broadcast?
No, yeah. So now what we need to do is.